I'm going to share my screen here of the slide deck I emailed you guys earlier, or late last night. All right, so this evening, we're just doing a holistic overview of the committees we have within the city. It's a brief 13-slide presentation, and we'll go through each committee one-on-one, have a discussion on them, and then at the end, we'll have just some open dialogue as well. So I'll refer you to your staff report for a more in-depth dive on each of these slides, but each of these slides summarize what's in your staff report. So, purposes work session is out of your August 28th goal-setting session that we had for this fiscal year. It was goal number three, review recruitment strategies and guidelines for committees. I have some key discussion questions there for you that we would like to work through among these committees, as well as other thoughts that you guys have are welcome. Tonight's work session is to provide direction to staff on what you're looking for in your committees, and if they're still the best fit for the city. We haven't looked at committees since the strategic plan process in '17 and '18 that was adopted at the beginning of 2019. So tonight's an opportunity to have that discussion. There won't be any decisions tonight. This is just a discussion, and anything from a decision standpoint, depending on the committee and how it was formed via resolution or ordinance, would dictate how those decisions would come back to you guys at a future meeting. So we have three types of committees to discuss tonight. Our state-required ones by ORS, our council-required ones by resolution, and then our code-required ones by ordinance. Our first-up committee by ORS is our budget committee. This committee, as you guys know, you're a part of this committee as well as seven members of citizens at large. The purpose of this committee is to make recommendations to the city council on the budget as required by law. I sent all these committees out to staff through the executive team, and then some of the staff liaisons filled out information that's in your packet as well. And so through that process, I had some questions for them in that, and that's what you see captured here. The re-imagine options would be to have a training meeting earlier in the year. And the other thing that Director Henry and I had chatted about was getting you guys an emailed quarterly financial report so you have a more current take of the overall budget. And that's something that I think would be a good recommendation, but open to thoughts on the budget committee.
Councillors, anyone? Okay. Councillor Cunningham?
Yes. So I'm seeing here the proposal to have one training meeting earlier in the year and then one meeting per week instead of having them so close together. But if I remember correctly, our most recent budget talk was that some of the issue was being able to get the book ready by a certain date, but then maybe not necessarily put it all into one week or a Friday, and then the rest of the meetings the second week. So is the idea of one meeting per week, is that that... And forgive me if I don't remember the exact dates, but is that like we would receive the budget book, then basically have one meeting a week immediately following that?
So that was the originally re-imagined options. Since we met, we've changed it to what the conversation was.
Oh.
So this was submitted before we had the work session, the joint work session with the budget committee. Since then, what we've talked about doing is having two meetings before. So the one in that we had already this year, sort of where... How are we doing after closing out the year? What do we want it to look like? And then another meeting, so another work session in January, where we would look at, excuse me, the first half of the year, where we are year-to-date, what the budget is, and also what we want the budget... Finish up that discussion on what we want the budget process to look like. And then we've discussed the calendar for this year to be... We did two per week, so they're... But they're spread out with a few days in between. So if... Our proposal would be that that's sort of a meeting in the middle or even better than what we had suggested here. It's just a timing thing that what was written in here is not quite the same.
I got it. I understand. Thank you.
So am I to clarify that we're having a meeting in January, and that's when we're going to clarify the actual meetings? Or are we doing it right here? Because I thought we were having that with...
No, so the budget calendar you guys had discussed at the last work session, and we had landed on those dates. I mean, when you guys are back together as a body, a full body of the budget committee, you can always bring that back up. But the proposed dates work for the staff as well as they seem to work for the budget committee at the time. The work session that'll be in January will be to discuss...
Presentations.
Presentations and the taxing authority, and kind of recap where we're at at the six-month mark of this current fiscal year. So you guys have that forecast going forward.
Okay, and we'll get the exact dates and everything?
Correct, yeah.
Sooner the better on the exact dates of vacation. Okay, thank you.
Anything else around budget committee this evening?
Councillor Payne.
Thank you. The proposal to have a training meeting earlier in the year, what are we getting trained on? Or what's the proposal to train us on?
So that is the conversation that we'll be having. It has to be in work session format to be in accordance with the law. We can't have a meeting-meeting. It has to be a work session format. So training/work session, whatever we decide to do in the work session. So in this one, as the city manager just discussed, it would be those items would be training, per se.
Does that make sense?
Does that make sense?
It's how we want the presentations...
I shouldn't have used the term "training." I should have used...
Yeah, I just wanted clarity because the Oregon Department of Revenue is the one that should be providing training on taxation. So I just want to be clear about what we're getting trained on, and if this is city-specific or if it's just a municipal income process or something. So I just... Clarity is helpful. Thank you.
This would be more around bringing potential new committee members up to speed on the city's budget and training them on our process for the upcoming budget cycle in May. Any other questions around budget committee?
All right.
Nope. We're good. Oh, Councillor Chenoweth.
So I'm not clear. Are we saying we are going to do this training, or that's still in discussion?
Training was probably a wrong choice of words, as Director Henry mentioned. It's the same work session you guys have every year that sets the TAV... Not the TAV, sets the taxing authority for the upcoming budget cycle so staff knows what they're working with. And that'll be set by the budget committee. All right, our next ORS committee would be the Historic Landmarks. This is a five-member committee that's overseen by Associate Planner Matthew Deppi. And the major thing to consider here is that there is some statutory date requirements, the 30-day window. So if you guys were to make any schedule changes outside of this one monthly meeting, that would be something they still need to meet with, or still need to meet from a state statute standpoint with land use. So any questions around historic landmarks?
Councillor Cunningham?
Do we think that... Because I think one of the recommendations was to possibly fold this into planning. In my experience, limited on the historic landmarks, the committee works diligently to work with the property owners in finding a good path forward for them in which protecting the landmark itself, but also allowing for people to be able to do the work that they need to, to, in essence, keep the buildings and properties maintained. I have no experience on the planning department other than the stuff that we've seen come through our dais. And so I just... I question the folding of this into planning and adding one to two meetings because of the scheduling to a planning department... or planning committee that is already fairly taxed with potentially large, extremely large projects, and we will have more of those in the future. So I just wanted to get the take maybe from Heather or Matt as to the viability or the right direction with that potential suggestion.
Real quick? Thank you for that, Councillor Cunningham. Just to clarify, reimagine options are what could be done. That doesn't mean it's a staff recommendation. And with Planning Commission being your heaviest workload committee by far, I would not make that recommendation. But it's in there, so you guys have all options on the table.
Just to add to that, too. So they are... There's only two committees that are making legal decisions for the city, these quasi-judicial decisions. It's the Historic Landmarks Committee and the Planning Commission. The Historic Landmarks Committee is comprised of people... Our code doesn't require them to be comprised with these skillsets, but we strive for it for people who understand historic landmarks, understand buildings, understand design and history of McMinnville. We are participating in what's called a Certified Local Government Grant Program where we get access to a grant every two years. It's not a lot. It usually ends up being anywhere between $15,000 and $20,000. But to be able to participate in that program, we have to show the type of skillsets that the committee is comprised of to show that they are, you know, representing the industry appropriately and understand what they're doing. I think bringing that type of work into the Planning Commission will require a lot of training of the Planning Commission to be able to get to that type of skillset as well to review those. And the Planning Commission right now is meeting anywhere between one or two times a month with some fairly long meetings.
Any other questions? Councillor Carey?
Yeah, I guess I'm just sharing thoughts on... Yeah, I think keeping this propped up as its own group meeting is my preference, and I understand and agree with what you're saying. Mr. Garvin? As just sort of what would it look like? And so I think where I think some of the... I think what could be helpful and maybe will get worked through as we have the planning department work plan review and just sort of look through the focus and assess hours and ensure that hours are dedicated here. If there's a building department assist component of this, just because it deals with a fairly small section of the code, a narrow couple pages that they're working with in the criteria, but it's often building-related as well as planning-related. And so I don't know if it's a manpower issue if there's a way... I know we're, you know, contract building official and some inspectors, but I wonder if that could be another way to help this group move through things a little quicker. So otherwise, I like the way that the HLC is set up already. Wouldn't be up for any tweaks.
Okay.
Councillor Payne, did you have something?
Councillor Carey did a good job of articulating my comments.
And the additional comments section, the training for chair and vice chair on Robert's rules, that's something that I've been talking with Attorney Leitenberg about. When we get to new committees on that annual basis and chairs and vice chairs are established to do training for those chairs and vice chairs, that could also be done Zoom. And so that way, we could create some more structure around how those meetings across all the committees are ran and facilitated just to have a more unified front on that.
And do you think that the trainer goes to all those and has all eight different meetings? Or it's, hey, I'm going to do one meeting, you're going to come to that and attend it, even if it's via Zoom, all the new people? I'm going to just clip you through Robert's rules, right?
The latter.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Chenoweth?
I just want to put strong support for that training. I think it's very helpful to... If these meetings run smoothly, and the best way they're going to run smoothly is if the leaders are trained. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Morse.
Councillor Tekolsky.
Thank you. I also want to put my support behind the training because in my experience, I've witnessed different methods being used, and they're not following Robert's rules. So I think it's important that we're on the same page. Thank you.
Definitely, and you will see that on some other slides this evening as well or in your staff report. That's a little bit deeper dive. But since this is the first slide it showed up on, I just wanted to call it out.
Besides Robert rules, some communication rules on some committees and conflict of interest. I think a little bit of all of that should be included in all training.
Okay. Anything else around historic landmarks? Or keep schedules the same and keep their work plan the same?
Schedule looks like we have a lot of them that are canceled. I guess one question I'd have is, how far in advance are we telling these committee members that their meeting is canceled?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor, because I wanted to share with you. We put a standing meeting on the calendar for all of our committees so that we can have that meeting if we need to have that meeting. So the premise of canceled is a little awkward. It's when we visit with our committee members, we've asked them, is it easier for you if we put a standing meeting note on your calendar and hold that hour, two hours, whatever? Or do you want us to let you know we're having a meeting in two weeks? And are you free for it? So the feedback we've gotten is they do like the standing meeting better. We had a discussion the other night at MIRAC where the vice chair went around and asked the MIRAC members individually what they preferred. They prefer the standing meeting as well. But they did comment that they would like to get notice further ahead of time if it is going to be canceled so they can free up that time in their calendar. So we're going to work on protocols, at least in the community development department, I'm sure we'll talk about it citywide, that if we continue to move forward with keeping a hold on people's calendars for those committees and commissions that meet as needed, that we communicate further in advance when we don't need them so we can take that off of their calendars.
Yeah, I think we'd have... It'd be nice to have a standard time, whether it be three business days or something like that, but across the board.
Director Richards, what's the current process?
Yeah, so our... It should be our goal we strive for in the department is seven days in advance posting the meeting packet. We're not always meeting that. We're also not always canceling meetings in that timeframe. That would be the goal that we, right now, strive for and would do a better job. If people want it to be earlier than that, we would try to achieve that earlier as well, that communication.
Councillor Chenoweth?
If I may, Kim, I was on the HLC for a while, and my experience was we got plenty of warning. And the timeframe... The reason why it was a fixed date is because of the requirements by law that they had to have these meetings within 30 days. And so routinely, when they got canceled, I was notified well in advance.
That's great. I just want to have it consistent on all committees. Because I'm not, you know, just so there's notification on all of them.
So currently, the benchmark, seven days, is counsel good with that? If we got to make that a little firmer, that that's not just the goal, but that is what we meet?
Yes.
Thank you. Our last ORS committee or commission is the Planning Commission. This is by far the heaviest lift of all of our committees this evening. Nine members, at least two from each ward. As Director Richards spoke earlier, they have two meetings a month. Sometimes they only meet once a month. But the purpose of that second meeting was to make their meetings not as long and be more efficient. So that's... Would still be the recommendation is to keep those two meetings on the calendar. And that's where you see, you know, some of those meetings have been canceled because they haven't been needed. But when you're working with land use deadlines and all the other things the Planning Commission sees come through, it's important to have that flexibility. And to my knowledge, the Planning Commission supports that wholeheartedly.
Anything from the council?
Yeah, I had a... Mayor?
Councillor Tekolsky?
So Director Richards, it says that there's five hours of staff time per meeting. Is that... After being on the Planning Commission and understanding how much the documentation is prepared, is that still an accurate statement, the five hours?
Yeah, and thank you for that question, too. So the documents that we prepare for the Historic Landmarks Committee and the Planning Commission are things we would have to prepare regardless. They are the decision documents. So that work's going to be done whether that committee's seeing it or not. And so the hours you see there are the hours needed to support the actual body meeting. So that's putting the packet together, being at the meeting, and then the follow-up, which would be we send our recordings to a transcriptionist. So it's not allowed a before-and-after-meeting time that we're actually putting into it that we wouldn't normally be putting into the work.
Okay, and is that only senior planner's hour's time? Or does that include time from your other planners?
It includes time from the other planners as they're working on projects, so they'll be bouncing in and out representing those projects in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Looks like we're good.
All right. That'll get us into our resolution committees this evening. First up, we have the Audit Committee. And this is a... From a staff perspective, a committee we'd like to see stay where it's at. And you have two members of council on there and one budget committee member. Any thoughts around the budget committee? I believe Mayor Morse is on there, and Councillor Payne?
Okay. Oh, Councillor Chenoweth?
So if this is being... Has been set up via ordinance...
Oh, this has been set up via resolution.
Resolution, sorry. Does that mean other cities don't have an audit committee?
Director Henry, could you take that?
Sometimes the council itself or the board, you know, functions as the audit committee. And so things are just brought to the board. So, I mean, that can happen instead of having a separate audit committee.
The significant difference is that when we go into an audit committee meeting, it's an hour to an hour and a half, like more in-depth, kind of going through one page at a time or one section at a time. When we finish that meeting and we come out here, you know, to our regular meeting, then we're getting kind of a 15-minute synopsis of what we just observed.
So if we got rid of this committee, the net effect of that would be that this would then fall in the lap of the council to be the audit committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I heard from Director Henry?
Yes, unless there was a finance committee that there was a resolution that said that the budget committee shall also be the finance committee or something to that effect. I mean, there are... If an audit committee/finance committee/council can be... That's more at the discretion of council, yes.
What are you thinking, Chris?
Well, I like the concept that that would come before us, for us as a body, to all be auditing it. I think the concept... I'm accountable, all of us are accountable as counselors to this, what's happening with the finances within our city. Yes, that's more responsibility and more time that I'd have to take, but that's part of what I signed on for. I am leaning that maybe this is a committee that doesn't need to exist anymore. And it should come back to the council for us to be the ones that actually are doing the full audit committee work.
I've had similar thoughts, and kind of like on the fence about it because it does take a lot of time. I think there would probably need to be some training that went with it for the council to understand, like, why we go through an audit. You know, I mean, we have to, but that it's not... We're not reviewing financial statements exactly. So I could go either way depending on other councilor's time.
Councillor Peralta?
Thank you. Is this a committee that reports to the body or to staff? Meaning to the city council, or does it report to staff? So is it considered a public body under Oregon Public Meetings Law?
I honestly don't know. Whatever the resolution, it's a committee that this city has established, so... Kind of look... Trying to look at the attorney.
What are you getting at? Are you... Sorry, I'm addressing a council director directly, but Mayor, I'm curious to know what my fellow counselor is getting at. Is he curious to know if there's an ongoing record or a way that we can see the... What transpired in the meetings? What's... Where are we going with this?
Well, the main reason is that if the committee reports to council, then it's subject to public meetings and, you know, publishes the schedule timely. And it just seems to me that the work that they do is pretty significant. I mean, I don't... I've been on... I've been in organizations where the audit committee is the body, and I've been on organizations where the audit committee is a separate committee. And I do think there's some benefit to having the audit committee being a separate committee. And I guess what I'm wondering is, are there issues that the audit committee addresses in committee that are shielded from public meetings? Usually, the reason I guess where I'm going with this is usually audit committees are internal audit committees. Usually, they're internally facing in the state government context. And for that reason, they're not normally public bodies because oftentimes, things that they discuss are privileged information related to the operations of the organization. And so I'm just trying to get clarity on if these are public meetings, then from my perspective, it doesn't matter a whole lot if it's an audit committee or the council. But if there are good reasons to shield some of what is discussed in the audit committee from the public meetings law, then that's something we should consider.
My understanding is that they're public, but I'm, again, looking to the attorney.
Insofar as any of these questions are from me, I'm not very familiar with the audit committee and am not able to answer these right now. I could look into it with the help of Director Henry. I'd be happy to report back to you. But no, I don't know the status of the audit committee.
Director Henry, does the audit committee ever meet in executive session?
Not that I know of. But again, I'm still trying to figure McMinnville out, so...
Did you look up the resolution?
It's not available online. It only goes back to like 2016 or something like that, so...
Councillor Payne?
Sorry, I was just going to say, in my three or four years on the audit committee, that we've never had an executive session.
Councillor Tekolsky?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Looking at the Audit Committee meeting agenda from March 11, 2025, bullet point number four says, "Report to the Honorable Mayor and City Council for our fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Auditor communication to those charged with governance." So that does tell me that they're reports through the city council and the mayor.
So it sounds like in that case, it's a governing body and subject to the same public meetings rules... Sorry. In that case, it sounds like it's a public body subject to the same public meetings rules that we're subject to. So really, from my perspective, it's just a question of whether the council wants to handle those kind of minutia of the budget here in the body or whether they prefer to delegate that to a subset of council and have that come back to us in a report. And I guess, all things being equal, I kind of prefer it come to us in a report, but I also don't feel that strongly about it. So if there's people that feel strongly about it, I can be moved either way.
Scott? Cunningham?
I'm trying to think of just... Because I... Obviously, again, only less than a year in. What is the typical... what is the typical thing that's discussed at the audit committee?
The audit.
Got it. It's in the name.
Counselor Cunningham, one thing you'd work on as the audit committee members are, we need to go out for an RFP for a new auditor. So that's one thing that's going to be this audit committee will be tasked with in the upcoming year. You also discuss the audit before it's brought before the body. So if there's any findings, the audit committee is going to be aware of that before it's briefed to council and can ask questions, as well as the audit committee has a lot deeper dive into that. So if you guys brought this and wrapped it back up into council, you'd have a deeper dive, but you'd also, you know, need to have a quorum here to have those meetings. So it would most likely be an additional meeting outside of your current meeting schedule.
Counselor Tekolsky.
Yeah, I just just to throw my opinion out there, the fact that we did have some significant budget challenges over the past few years, at least makes me consider if we're being as effective as we could be. And so I would entertain that for at least a year, maybe have a greater vision and understanding of what's taking place with the option to move back.
Counselor Gary, can you give us just a feeling?
Oh, a quick question. If we, oh, I'm assuming the rough proposal is do away with the audit committee and the council just gets all that information. So if we expand that to, you know, the two hours of this body doing that work, what's the increased staff time on that if we're meeting as a body for longer and the room's full and the lights are on? How different is that than just having two counselors and a budget committee member at the audit committee table?
I personally would see it more as like a work session or something like that than as a completely separate body meeting. I, to me, we could start at 5:30 instead of 6:00 one day, or we could, you know, something to that effect.
Okay.
I see it as taking less staff time because I can staff a meeting that's with all of you in a work session or something with Claudia here or Scott when he's wearing Claudia's hat. And whereas if I'm doing it with someone else, I have to have a staff member that's being then paid comp time or overtime to come in to do to staff the meeting because there aren't other people in the room. So in order to set it up and have assistance with that.
Okay. I guess I don't have strong feelings that we do away with the audit committee and fold that into this group. Maybe if there's two people that do want to do that, they could be subbed in to be one of both of the counselors and do put do the work and see what that's like. And if you continue to feel strongly, then we can do that. But or also if that is added to our work, I'm ultimately okay with that, too. I just don't feel strongly.
I would just like to clarify the staff time question. That would be less staff time for finance, but it would be a heavier lift for the organization because you're now putting that into a full bodied meeting in this area instead of a small audit committee meeting in the small conference room.
Understood.
So it is a heavier lift from an organization standpoint. And to clarify for Counselor Tekolsky, the audit committee is looking over how the budget was implemented the previous fiscal year. You're not setting the budget for the upcoming year. That's sent via the budget committee in the budget process. So it's not an opportunity to do a deep dive into, you know, setting spending limits or anything like that. That's sent through the budget committee.
Counselor Peralta.
Thanks. I think you introduced this committee saying that it was a staff recommendation to keep. Is that right?
Correct. There's no, no changes recommended.
What was and do you have any any other comments on the basis for the point of view?
No, I sent out my document to the ET and Director Henry was happy with how it was operating. She had comments for budget committee, which we already went through. But committee, there is no recommendations.
Thanks.
But no recommendation doesn't mean that I recommend we keep it. It just means I have no recommendation.
Okay.
I would be happy to answer the question if so asked.
Mayor? Yeah, I'd like to hear your answer, Katie.
Sure. Personally, I would prefer it be the whole council. I struggle with having to give my audit report to only a few on council. I think that it's extremely important that internal controls be understood by the entire council. The main purpose of the audit committee is to review how well our internal controls are working as far as keeping material misstatements out of the financial statements. So material misstatements mean, is the money coded in the right place? And are we reporting to our citizens the accurate financial happenings of the city? And so what happens when the auditors come and present that to only two counselors instead of the whole council, to me, you don't get the same questions as you might get if everybody was there. So I struggle with the committee being this small. That's my personal view.
Okay, so I need some direction overall.
Yeah, so just based on, thank you, Mayor, based on Director Henry's comments here, I would be in favor of trying the one year of having that come to the full council. And yeah, and thank you for making that so clear.
Chris?
I was going to say similar comments to what Council President said. I brought it up because I do feel like not only does it provide an opportunity for us to know more about what's going on, but it also provides training to us to understand how and why it goes on. And I think that's very helpful to us as a council body. Every time we're in a meeting, we're gathering more information and becoming more effective counselors. So I'm in favor.
Counselor Cunningham.
I'm in favor.
This end, Gary?
I would just, I know, because we're not leaving this meeting with make it so, it's bringing some information back. If you can bring more back to illuminate what that organizational lift means, if we're moving that way, that would just be helpful for me. Thank you.
I.
Thank you. I won't, it's probably available online, but I would just encourage counselors to look up the last year's audit, just so you know, like the document and what it looks like. I mean, we get a quick scroll through during that 15 to 30 minute long distance view. And then the other thing I would add is we would be eliminating one meeting for some group of people, which is good. I appreciate Director Henry's comments. And I, I too would advocate for the year off, especially when we're going, we're going to have to go through this RFP process for a new auditor.
Dan, did you have anything, Counselor Tekolsky, before?
Yeah, I'd say just make it happen.
I would say direct the interim city manager to provide us with a little bit more information of cost to change and and what the lift is. We've talked about capacity. So what it is, bring back that to us and we can make our final decisions since we can't make a decision here.
Understood. And a time check, it's 6:10. You got about 50 minutes to get through more than half of your committees left. So just wanted to keep that top of mind for you. Next up, we have MIRAC, which is our other resolution, our last resolution related committee. You guys are very familiar with MIRAC, given your interactions that you you have through budget process and various other things that happen throughout the year. Reimagine options would be quarterly meetings and then as needed. As you heard from Director Richards earlier, the committee prefers to have a monthly hold on their calendars. But that's up to you guys if that's what you'd like to keep it as.
I would like to propose, so in the article right now, it's they meet at least quarterly, which I'm fine with leaving that as a minimum that they meet quarterly. But I would like to make it more specific that it be the first month of each quarter so that we don't have one meeting in the first quarter in January and one meeting in the second quarter in May or June. I think there needs to be some consistency there. But if the committee needs things to meet monthly, that's fine. That's over and above. But I think we do need to look at, again, capacity and a notice if they're not going to have a meeting. Keep that in play.
Any other thoughts around MIRAC?
It says one canceled meeting this year. Is that right? We had one canceled meeting?
I think we've had two because this is, again, information that got this that got inputted prior to the last. Let me look on it. It's canceled meetings that's on the website. So I was looking at that this morning because I had the same question, Counselor Gary.
It was June, August, and October-ish.
We had some, we had some joint meetings with city council as well.
Oh, right.
Past year.
Counselor Gary, this information was collected through 9:30. So that would not be included in the account.
Yeah, or some in lieu of, okay.
Any other thoughts around MIRAC? And is there consensus to put the stipulation that the quarterly is the first month of each quarter?
I'd support that. Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Next up, we're moving to our code and ordinance related committees. And first up, we have our airport advisory committee. The major reimagine option for this would be to move from our bi-monthly schedule to a quarterly schedule, just given the the lack of substance that those those meetings have and timing of them. And that committee is very open to having special called meetings if needed. So our new airport manager, John, is in the crowd if you'd like to ask him any questions. And this was his recommendation.
Counselor Chenoweth.
I do have a quick question on that. So, you know, there's lots of discussions that are taking place on the development of the airport and on land nearby. And so I wonder if now is the right time to be cutting back on meetings. I do understand that for the last several years, there may have not been a lot of content. But I also foresee in the near future that content increasing. So again, I just wonder if this really is the right time to be cutting back. But we'll lean into your position.
Mayor.
Counselor Tekolsky.
Yeah, if I may, I do sit on the airport advisory committee, and I've found that they are a very responsive group when necessary to have special called meetings. And I've found that they're very collaborative and they quickly come to a conclusion when they can meet, not should we meet, but they find a way to make it happen. So.
So do you favor, sorry, Mayor, does Counselor Tekolsky favor the quarterly?
Leaving it at quarterly and then meeting as.
I do favor that, making it a quarterly meeting, as long as our airport manager has the opportunity for special call meetings.
Mr. Pascal, do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I would agree. I think that was my recommendation was just to go to quarterlies and then special meetings as needed. For instance, I could imagine maybe during budget season, maybe a need for a meeting in between the quarterlies. But either the chair or staff can can recommend special meetings. So I would recommend the same standing meetings that you just talked about with MIRAC, where you have a July, April, I'm sorry, a January, April, July, and October meeting, then fill in the gaps if needed.
Sounds like we're in agreement.
All right.
Thank you.
Have consensus for that. Any other airport advisory committee, airport commission comments? None, we'll move on. Next up, we have our affordable housing committee. This committee does important work and they've also are working with the new state required rent burden meetings. You see that coming up as well. So there's quite a bit of information in your packet from Evan on this committee or on this committee and would welcome any, any comments. It wasn't wasn't really looking to reimagine anything with it, but also have Director Richards here to answer questions.
Any comments from Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. The last bullet point in the slide says, recent appointments have mainly joined to learn about affordable housing, one that shifts the broader committee's role from collaborative problem solving with service providers to broader civic engagement with policies and programs. I think that it's really admirable that we are trying to engage residents in affordable housing and the issues related to it. But I do think it's unfortunate that that committee, if that sentence is accurate, that the committee is kind of creeping away from its original intent because, you know, a lot of the affordable housing programs that we have developed as a city have come out of that committee. And I think it's really important that we lean into the expertise and partnerships that we have rather than using it as a, as a tool to educate a fairly small number of residents. I'd be interested in your thoughts on that, Director Richards.
Yeah, certainly. I think it's twofold. So the, the committee started as a task force in 2016. As you know, at that time, it was comprised of two counselors and primarily housing providers. And we had a lot of discussion about the types of programs needed to incentivize affordable housing. As we started developing the programs, it also became clear that the folks who were developing them and also would be reviewing them and making recommendations to city council were the ones who needed them. And so there was a lot of discussion about having to recuse themselves from sort of that part of the decision making process. So we, at one point in time, I believe, I'd have to go back to the history, but I thought we rewrote the enabling ordinance to encourage more people to participate on the committee who weren't providers, who weren't going to be applicants of the programs as well so that we could have a body of people who understood the programs and could review the applications, too. So it's kind of, you know, balancing act of having the knowledge at the table for the providers, but also putting together programs that they can participate in and not have the full body have to recuse itself from from the program.
Can I follow up?
Counselor Peralta.
Thank you. Okay, I hear that and I appreciate that. And then are you saying that I shouldn't be concerned that that we're moving away from that kind of problem solving model and the use of the committee in that way? Or do you feel that the committee is still positioned to do the important work?
Yeah, I think Evan's concern is recruiting people who have the knowledge to be on the committee versus also having enough of a broader representation of participants on the committee, if that makes sense. And I can visit with him about it. But I know that when we did revise the charter, we created a lot of different liaisons and invited them to be at the table so that they would be there for the meeting and the discussion and the informative piece of it, but weren't sort of the voting body when it came to voting on things because of that sort of conflict that was occurring. But I can, I can visit with Evan about that a little bit more and have the city manager bring it back to you.
Mayor.
Counselor Cunningham.
I would absolutely agree with Heather's assessment on that one, specifically because of the work that we just went through with the construction excise tax grants that hopefully we will have here finished shortly. If you were to have all of those groups be the main deciders, then they would have to recuse themselves entirely from any of that. So it does allow for the committee to do the work, but still have the partnerships there and hopefully benefit a greater pool of people.
Is the committee size, I mean, it's a pretty large committee. Does that play into it at all? I mean, you have three ex officios and two city councilors and an 11 member committee. Would reducing that in any way help?
Yeah, I think when we were, see, this is all bringing back, when we rewrote the the enablement ordinance, it's coming back to me, we had that discussion because I think originally it was like seven or nine people. And we didn't want to lose the think tank that was on there, but we wanted to bring additional bodies in. So then the decision was to make it bigger and have more. was to make it bigger and have more liaisons. We can certainly manage to whatever the council's interested in. To me, the size of the committee isn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily create more staff burden in terms of the resources we bring to staffing the committee.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Does it actually have 11 participating members? Because it only shows six online.
We have, we had a lot of vacancies that we've been interviewing and filling for.
Okay. The other, the other thing I wanted to say was I agree with Counselor Peralta here as well. The last bullet point did also concern, caused concern for myself. It seems to be a challenge if we have people that are there to learn about affordable housing rather than actually help create policy around the affordable housing without the knowledge of those that could have the knowledge. So it'd be like if we had a planning commissioner without construction experience or experience reading a, a, a print of some kind, or if they, they weren't familiar with the historic landmarks, laws with the Historic Landmarks Committee. I guess it concerns me that we're training people rather than having them help us in general.
So maybe, oh, Counselor Cunningham.
I think to some extent, I, I completely understand the current concerns there around the, the bullet point. But in, in a, in a time where we do not have a tremendous pool of volunteers, I think that might be some of the issue that we're dealing with. I can tell you, they are all very passionate people. We, there is the folks who have joined that do have experience. But I think in what Evan may be referring to is in some cases that they're just, the, the person who joined was, was the, the one or, or of two applicants, maybe.
But to help you guys in this discussion point, via the unified boards and committee appointment policy, the choice to appoint somebody remains the discretion of the council. So even if you theoretically had four vacancies and only two applicants, their appointment is still at your guys' discretion throughout all the committees.
Counselor Payne?
I know historically, this group has had committee members that are outside of the city of McMinnville. And so I just want clarity real quick on who, is it kind of a free-for-all that anybody can join this committee?
No, it's in the McMinnville Municipal Code, the, how this committee is formed and what the membership is for it. I believe there is some language in there that states that if, if they have experience with affordable housing, that they can live outside the city and participate in the committee. We have that on a couple of our other committees too, that have sort of these specialized niches that they need to fill. I've, I'm looking at the committee members right now that are online. There's eight of them right now. We have three vacancies. And many of them are actual providers representing the affordable housing community. What I can do is go back to Evan, find out why he put that bullet point in there. We, I can share with him City Council's concern about making sure that the committee is efficient in terms of their role and function, and having the people on the committee that are representing that interest for the city appropriately, and, and see what he thinks, and then bring recommendations through the city manager back to you as you continue these discussions.
I think that's good, to have interim city manager work with you to get the information, bring it back to us, because also the amount of staff time it takes to fill spots that are currently being, that are continually being vacated, needs to be brought into that thought process, too. So.
And Counselor Peralta, did you have another question?
I just wanted to express the comment that, that we have eight members of the committee on, online, I think Heather just said. And I just want to express my appreciation for all the members serving on this and the other committees for joining us tonight and for your service. I don't want anybody to think that our conversation here is in any way a negative reflection on any of the committees.
And I apologize, I need to clarify that. I was looking at online at the committee membership.
Okay.
I don't know who's on the Zoom meeting because I can't see that, so.
Regardless, I support that comment as well. Volunteers are important, so thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, is that good? Adam?
Yep, I have clear direction on that. Thank you. Time check, we have three committees to get through, plus any final thoughts, and it's 6:25. Our next committee we have is a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and they meet monthly. There is a significant staff time per meeting to prep for that. This committee was formed in 2020 under ordinance 5097. Some additional comments from Noel was what you see there, that there's an opportunity to, to bring this internal as some other surrounding communities have done. And Noel is online as well. If you guys would like to ask her any questions around the DEI.
Counselors? Counselor Chenoweth?
So I have, I've expressed this a couple of times. I have concerns, we're getting ready in 2026, I believe, or 2027, to go forward with a Main Street funding request to the federal government for somewhere between $26 and $27 million to try to renovate Third Street. And our current president has made it clear that he's going to limit funding to cities that have one of two things, one of which is DEI, the other of which is sanctuary policies. I'm not willing to risk the, the need that we desperately have downtown for something that, and I appreciate the comments that are made in here, that can be done internally by staff. So I, I'd like to see us remove this committee.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did attend the last DI meeting, and what I heard was the recommendation to continue the work internally, but dissolve the DEI language and remove that hazard, I guess you could call it. And Counselor Payne was also in attendance at that one. And she had evidence that there was the threat of financial, finances being removed from cities. And so if you're willing to share, that's fine as well. But the work could be done internally. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done. What I'm saying is it could be done by those that are experiencing this need, and it would also remove the liability as well.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important that we retain the committee. If we need to amend the name of the committee to better reflect the scope of the work, then that's something we should discuss, I think, or consider. I have several reasons for it. I agree that there is a push by the current administration against policies dated back to federal desegregation of schools and the Civil Rights Act, and that they are opposing those policies and that the DEI falls under that. But there are also several federal laws that require us to consider policies that also fall under the DEI guidelines. And I think it's just important that we have people in the community who are engaged in doing that work. We have an unusually large population of people with disabilities, nearly a third in some parts of town, according to our own recent surveys. We have a significant community of partners like MV Advancement and its clients that should be engaged in considering policies that affect the city. Nearly a quarter of the residents, in my word, are immigrants within the last two to three generations. That constituency is, continues to be significantly underrepresented in local government here. And finally, I think it just sends a poor message to the community at this particular time to, to consider eliminating the committee, given the work, the, the importance of the work. So I'd be in favor of, of considering a name change if that's needed, if that buzzword is problematic for the current administration. But I do think that the work is important and needs to continue.
Counselor Geary?
Thank you. My feelings would be in line with Counselor Peralta, and only a potential option if it's, the current burden on staff is look at a rescheduling, or maybe, you know, every other month or, or whatever, if that helps prop up the workload or distribute that for those meetings. Maybe that could be efficient. I have two follow-up questions. One, if staff has any knowledge on the current federal grant process of how that's going and, and knowledge of if there have been impacts or how that process flows through. Does it come straight to McMinnville, or does it go through a series of intermediaries like the state of Oregon or the county and go its way through? And if that isn't at hazard, or if there's not enough not, experience to know yet. And then the comments on internal work, my understanding from this slide would be internal work, putting more than on internal work would be a rise in FTEs dedicated to that work, and we require budget space for that.
Counselor Tocolski?
Yeah, two things. Number one, I'd like to, I, I understand the empathy to try to keep the DEI committee itself. I would question, what, what is it that they've provided for the city internally? And I, I would be open to an answer from any fellow counselor. And then also, I would ask the city manager, what would be the load if you did bring this internal to continue some of this work? And do you think it would be possible to do so? If you could provide your opinion. Thank you, Mayor.
First up, I'll have City Attorney Leitner speak to the, the grant process and what we currently are seeing with that.
Thank you. As you know, this has been a bit of a moving target. But what is clear is after the executive order calling out discriminatory practices in hiring, every federal department has brought forward, I shouldn't say every, different federal departments have brought forward different standards for how to bring that forward in their grant writing process. We have talked about, we, my professional organizations have talked about the different language that has been used by different cabinet members in different writings for different grants. So it's hard to paint this with a broad brush, though one, anticipating some portion of this question, the one that we saw recently was with regard to an FAA grant, and I brought the language along with me. What they were looking for is that we could attest to the fact that the city is in compliance in all respects with all applicable federal anti-discrimination laws. And, and then some citations. So that was something that I had to review at the time compared to the executive order in question and allow the city to attest to that. The, the big legal analysis and calculus for the sake of this language, in my mind, was that our, was that the, the executive order call to anti-discriminatory practices is particularly with regard to discriminatory practices in hiring and in contracting. And our DEI programs, as listed in their mission statements, are not involved in those things, and particularly involved in measures of accessibility and outreach to our communities. Which brought me to the point where I was very comfortable with staff signing this language in this instance. Now, you should also know, as I started, these are different, in different departments. We have seen evidence that some federal departments may be using AI tools to do, to do keyword searches and are cutting things off indiscriminately. It was very clear to me in my analysis here that the city is not in violation of the purpose or scope of the federal call to non-discriminatory practices. What risk that poses is part of the conversation that you're having.
Thank you. So.
And then Dan, to your other question, do you want to leave that to council to answer first, or would you like staff to speak to what DEI committee's done for the city?
I, realistically, it would be whoever's best to answer, whoever knows the most. I don't know that we are that body.
Okay. So I'll have Noel take that. I, I would say that this year has been a little light for, for the DEI committee as their 2025 work plan was never formally put in front of you guys as a body. And Noel can speak to that. But the committee is, is passionate. As far as bringing this, to Counselor Geary's point, bringing this internal, there's a few ways you could do that. You know, one would be definitely to support it with FTE and a budget, budgetary, and ask for the budget. Another thing would be to roll it into current city staff and policies and have an internal, internal focus with current staffing levels.
Noel, are you online that wanted to say something?
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to. So I, I think it's probably important to remember that the, you know, this committee is fairly new. And whenever you have any sort of new program, it's really, you know, it's a challenge to sort of get in there, really kind of determine, you know, what is our purpose, and how do we serve this purpose, set those goals, and create work plans around those goals. And I think, you know, some of the, some of the biggest thing this committee has contributed to, that this council is aware of, is probably the PROS Plan. This committee played the part of the project advisory committee for the duration of the PROS Plan. So that was about an 18-month, 18-month project that the committee was heavily involved in. And that they're pretty proud of the work that they contributed to that. The committee also had a significant hand in the current boards and commissions policy that City Attorney has mentioned earlier and City Manager. We, David and I had sat as he was putting together that policy and really kind of discussed some of the best practices that the DEIAC had had already put in place for their own committee as a way to make those recommendations that all committees should follow, a more accessible and approachable process for applying for committee appointments. And, you know, something else to, you know, this committee has actively supported and been part of visible celebrations in McMinnville, uplifting Juneteenth, which is the first. We've done that for two years in a row now, and that's something that the city has done for the first time here in McMinnville. And, you know, we, we've been, oh, oh, I, I don't want to forget the organizational assessment. That's something that the committee worked really hard on last year and was part of that process. Also part of the organizational assessment, they did, the consultant did recommend that there was some sort of paid internal staff that supports the work of this, not only the work of this committee, but also internal work that needs to be done here in McMinnville for DEI. So those are just to name a few things. Happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Noel, you mentioned public events. I know I attended the Asian Lunar New Year, Juneteenth, I think two Latino events. Can you talk a little bit more about the role that the DEI committee's played in supporting public events in the city beyond just the brief mention of the Juneteenth?
Sure. Outrolling, you know, rolling out some of those has been sort of slow in some ways. Juneteenth is one that's led specifically by the DEIC, which is one that we, which is why I mentioned that one specifically. That's one that the DEIC partners with Parks and Recreation, but they're sort of the, the leader of putting that event on, you know, creating the, the programming and what the outreach and the education is going to be around that. In terms of how they've supported other cultural events in McMinnville, they support those events. Many of our, many of our members go and volunteer for setup and teardown. We talk about marketing. They've helped with disseminating flyers throughout the town, contacting, you know, using their network. So, you know, lots of ways, and it sort of varies by, varies by the event itself, but definitely heavily involved in those.
Thank you. Let's go to Counselor Payne first.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo the comments made by Noel. This committee's done a lot of really good work in the city. And I appreciate Counselor, Council President Peralta for mentioning the grant application that I was, or the award letter that I was privy to was very clear that there are several acts and laws that still have to be followed by the city in accordance with whatever, or municipality, whoever's the recipient of the award, including the Civil Rights Act of 1964, fair housing, the ADA, IDEA. I will also add that the DEIC has some really unique partnerships that probably wouldn't have been developed if it weren't for the DEIC, including have been developed if it weren't for the DEIC, including Unidos, YCCO, Yamhill County Mental Health, the school district. And having those partnerships is really kind of the foundation of DEI for McMinnville in that we're touching a lot of community members through the partnerships of that committee.
One other thing that I would like to highlight really quickly is also that this is, it's very unique that this committee is the only committee, I believe, that has a sitting youth member and really hasn't had any trouble filling that position. We've had, we've had several members from Lynnfield College, as well as McMinnville High School, participate in the DEIC. And our youth member is a voting member, so it is one opportunity for a committee member of our youth population to be involved in some decision-making, you know, at a very real level. And that's very unique to the DEIC.
Thank you, Noel.
So my thought process is I was going to go more towards what Noel was recommending, that we look at some internal paths. Concerned about the six to 12 hours that it's taking staff time for the meetings and the fact that we haven't had any, it's an advisory board and I don't believe anything's come to the council this year. And this transition would strengthen the internal collaboration that we have by bringing the committee in-house. Staff from multiple departments can work directly together on the DEI initiatives. It ensures the proper handling of sensitive information. Many DEI recommendations involve internal data, HR practices, or personnel-related policies that must remain within appropriate confidentiality and governance boundaries. It would improve operational efficiency, internal structures, streamline communication, reduce duplicate efforts, and allow us to respond more quickly and accurately. I also think the community input remains very important. Moving the committee in-house does not eliminate the public involvement. It simply places the operational part of the work where it belongs while still welcoming community voice through appropriate avenues. Our goal is long-term sustainability and accountability. An internal process provides consistency, clear authority, and stable support for the work. This is not an operational decision, it's not a political one. We're aligning DEI work with the processes and people best equipped to carry it out. And I have to say that we had been told that we may be getting a grant. And I have made multiple phone calls and emails and text messages to our federal representatives to find out if we would get it, having this committee. And I can't get them to answer me 100%. So I do have concerns. I believe in what we do, I just think we need to look at doing it in a different way and to make sure that we're in line to get additional funds, which would help the entire city.
Mayor?
Counselor Tenawith?
I just would like a clarifying follow-up question to Counselor Tocolski. I understood you to say at the beginning of this conversation that the DEIAC was okay with the dissolution of the committee. Is that what you said?
I would encourage you to go watch the previous meeting and understand the exact terminology they were using because I don't want to speak for a committee of which I'm not a part of. But what I would say was there was chatter in that meeting about finding ways to do this internally and removing that burden and the threat of the lack of funding. And Counselor Payne was in there as well. I don't know if you have anything more to add to that.
I would, just to follow that up, Mayor, thank you for your words. I pretty much 100% concur with most of what I've heard here today about the importance of some of the things that we have done in the DEI committee and the importance of moving this forward as an in-house work. I would caution those that think that changing, merely changing the name of the DEIAC in a day and age that we live in with the kind of advanced AI technologies that are available, and particularly since meeting minutes like these will be on record. If we think that that is somehow going to work to protect us from the potential liability that we're looking at, I would caution you that I don't see that being a safe place to be. I would also like to kind of end my thoughts on this. One of the most important reasons that we are trying to get Third Street redone is the most vulnerable among us can't walk it. And so it seems contradictory to put that project, which is my burden in this conversation, in a position of potentially being lost in order to protect this committee when we can do the work in-house.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. What I heard today is that the basis for produce, for preventing federal funding related to DEI doesn't even touch the areas that our DEI committee is focusing on. They don't touch either of the two areas, including employment, that the federal laws seem to address. And that's, we have an opinion from our attorney that we are in compliance. So I think the main risk that we have is not that the committee itself is a foul of any, of any federal laws, but rather that it just get, getting caught up in a heuristic search. So I do think that changing the name and keeping it with the same mission does insulate us to a greater extent because we're not currently in violation of any federal law with the committee. So that's one. Two, I would have concerns about bringing this in-house because that's one area where I've heard other members of the council talk about wanting cuts in previous cycles. And so I'm worried that if we bring the work of that committee entirely in-house, that it may not be something that, that some members of council choose to fund in future, future budget years. So if, if, so that's a second concern. And then the third concern again is that, you know, our ward is 25%. Our ward is 25%. Yours and my ward is 25% immigrants.
I understand, but you're supposed to direct to the mayor, not to me.
Well, I'm directing this to the public. And so our ward is 25% immigrants. And the people in our ward do not have significant representation in this city. The immigrants in this city do not have significant representation at any level. And so if we have a public-facing community where we're encouraging people to, from, from different marginalized groups, to engage with the city, be involved in helping with policymaking for the city and developing leadership skills, I think that is absolutely an important role for this committee and an important entryway into other, other committees. So I think the work's important. I'm concerned if we bring it in-house, and I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I was just going to ask if we could put a pin in this one because we do have other committees to get to, and it is...
Yes, I would like to as well, otherwise. Can we look at some other, I think we need to discuss it later? Do you have any recommendations?
So from what I see on the dais tonight, it's definitely you guys are split on where you need to, where you'd like to go. And so I would say what, what I see as a need for you guys to do is define its purpose. If the committee is going to stay, they need clear direction from this policy body on what you want out of them, how often you'd like them to meet, and, and things like that. So we can bring this back. There's about 10 minutes left of tonight's work session. You have two more committees to get through, plus any final thoughts. So are we good to move on and bring this back to you? All right. Our second to last is our EVLC committee. This committee was formed out of the strategic planning process. This was a new committee that was formed out of that. They also have the 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan as their charge that came with the EVLC. That is a similar document to, you know, the higher overarching strategic plan for the city. That's a document that I would like to work through with EVLC and go line item by line item like you guys did in August. So they would do the similar staff review of that and go through and see what's been operationalized, what's still outstanding, and then eventually bring that to you guys to go through that Economic Development Strategic Plan at a, at a later date after they've had a look at it to have you guys weigh in on that as well and do an eventual addendum and adopt that to the MACTOWN 2032 EDSP. Any additional thoughts on EVLC or their charge?
I would like to talk about term limits, which I know is on the bottom as additional discussion. I don't think we should have term limits on when we're asking an organization to place someone on the committee. I think that should be up to the organization who they want to place, us not to tell them how long they have to be there.
I'd like to follow that up if I may.
Follow that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, the EVLC voted on this very topic today. And by unanimous request is requesting that the city council remove all of the term limit language out of this committee. I could go through the host of reasons if somebody wants them. If not, I'm not going to waste our time since we have eight minutes left in this meeting. But it was a unanimous decision.
I agree.
We have consensus to bring that back?
Looks like it.
Any other comments on EVLC? And thank you for the members that showed up this evening. So your last, last committee this evening to go through is the Landscape Review Committee. Lots of verbiage here, but the short, short version of that is 2019-ish. It was discussed to bring street tree permits to the administrative level as well as some of the landscape review. You guys voted on that in May of 2025. That took two readings to get through. Counselor Geary was the nay vote in both of those meetings. And then you guys had the code revisions to put some tighter guardrails around that administrative process come before you in October. You guys voted not to tighten up the code language, and that brings you to your discussion tonight.
Counselor Tenawith?
Yeah, I'd just like to go on record admitting I was wrong and that I should have been voting with Counselor Gary voting nay back in May. So I, I would, my preference would be to put it back to where it was before that vote. Tightening up the language after that fact would be fine, but I, it was never my intent that we would end up essentially creating a process that made the Landscape Committee of very little effect.
Counselor Payne?
Thank you. We, so we had a meeting last week, and I'll get into that more during my, during my time during our regular meeting. But I think it's important that this group understands that the clear and objective standards were articulated to reduce staff time in preparation of the Landscape Review Committee meetings. I think a really good example is that when there's a dead or diseased tree, or it's pulling up the sidewalk or something, that's a clear and objective standard. That's very clear. That a street tree removal doesn't necessarily need to come to, to a committee to be removed, which is where the clear and objective standards came from. And hopefully Director Richards will correct me if I'm overstating. And so that freed up the Landscape Review Committee also, because we were having two to three meetings a month prior to those clear and objective standards. I think my sense is having the clear and objective standards now makes the committee more effective in doing the work that these talented individuals have experience and significant experience in. And they're still reviewing like large format commercial, right, Director Richards?
I guess I would say with your limited time, maybe talk about the, the structure of the committee and the meetings and how you want them held. But we did hold a two-hour meeting on November 5th, I think it is, and visited with the Landscape Review Committee members. The request to have the process that was delineated in the code, and just to clarify, that process did not remove the Landscape Review Committee from reviewing landscape plans. They removed them from review, removed them from reviewing landscape plans that met clear and objective standards. And by state law, we have to have clear and objective standards in our code for landscaping for housing projects. So anything that's just a checklist, it removed them from that. They don't want to be a rubber stamp committee. They want to be more involved. So they wanted some time to do the strategic, the strategic discussion to establish what those minimum standards are for the clear and objective standards. And they also wanted to work on the more complex projects. There was some misunderstanding amongst the committee members that had communicated with city council. And I think there was misunderstanding amongst the city council when we were talking about that on October 14th. Our presentation was too pithy, I guess, and we didn't, we didn't go into that, that much. I think the Landscape Review Committee is comfortable now with the process that's been established and the direction and goals that they wanted to go in. This all came from them originally, this work. And the reason for it is to be able to do more strategic work as well as committee members.
Counselor Tenawith?
So my understanding now is the process allows the developer to decide whether or not it will be reviewed by administrative over the Landscape Review Committee. Is that inaccurate?
Yeah, that, that is inaccurate. And that's, that's where there was some confusion. So the code allows the developer to meet the clear and objective standards. You meet these minimum standards, you can go through the process in a clear, objective way, checklist, checklist, checklist. If you want to do something different, then you need to go into the Landscape Review Committee for whatever that difference is. And we have, we have plans today going through that process. When they come to the Landscape Review Committee and they meet the checklist, and we have to by law have clear and objective standards for projects to meet, then the Landscape Review Committee is getting frustrated because they, they don't, they want to be able to move that project in a different direction, but they can't if it meets that clear and objective standards. And they expressed some frustration that they were kind of rubber stamping. That was part of our conversation last week.
Counselor Geary?
I don't know how to square that, and we don't have time to go through the code itself. But as I read 1757050A as it's rewritten, my understa, how I read that does not concur with that, what you said.
Yeah, so the language might be poorly written, and we'll go through that review. You haven't passed it. So if there's interest with the Landscape Review Committee to go back and look at that and, and square it up a little bit better in terms of that process and eliminate confusion, then we'll do that work. But in terms of what the, the two paths that are the intention of the code, if it's not reading that way, that's, that's, we have to fix that. But the tension was if it's a checklist and you meet the checklist, the Landscape Review Committee is doing so much other work and wants to do additional work that they haven't been able to get to, that that checklist rubber stamp process, they don't want. But for the more complicated projects that are not the checklist, they do want to see those.
Counselor Tenawith?
What I'm struggling with that is when I look at the number of canceled meetings, they're doing so much work, but we're canceling, the number of canceled meetings is going up. So that's concerning, that I feel, what I, and what I felt from the folks that I have spoken to, was that, that the perception at that time was clearly that these major plans were now optional, whether they were going to come to the Landscape Committee or not. And the code seems to indicate that. I don't want that to be the case.
Yeah, I think the best thing for us to do is perhaps schedule a future work session, bring the chair and vice chair from the committee in so you can have that conversation with them, and we can work through that. But, because I do think that there is some misunderstandings that were communicated by a couple of the committee members. I think the conversation we had last week was a good conversation. I think the committee as a whole left that meeting with what they felt was going to be the direction moving forward, and we're comfortable with that. But I, but for your purposes, I think it'd be good for you to have a work session with the chair and vice chair to understand that from them. And for the purposes of their role tonight in terms of the committee, understanding that, that, that work to create, we still have to legally have clear and objective standards that are reviewed administratively for housing. That can't change, that's a legal standard, we need to do that.
Okay.
They still need to meet to review other plans.
Okay. I just want to say, I listened to the Landscape Committee, and I, I think the communication was the biggest problem throughout the whole thing. And to have something that started in 2019 and not everybody on the committee now knew what that...
in 2019, and not everybody on the committee now knew what that was, and I think that was partially to the council, too, not understanding that it was more about street trees. I'm not sure that a work session is necessary. I think we need to talk to interim City Manager Garvin about that. We have a lot of work sessions. It might be something that we look through as a council, come up with our questions, and have communication that way. It's seven o'clock, but I do want to give an extra 10 minutes, if that's okay, to just go through any quickly general comments. Are we okay? You have to make it quick.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we have to start sometime after seven, but no earlier.
Correct.
Okay, so no more than, we're going to do this in 10 minutes. Tom, or Tom, Dan Tokowski, do you have anything that you want to add, general comments?
I had a comment about that LRC says it has a youth liaison as well. Is that correct?
By the way, the ordinance is written, it's available, but there's not currently one appointed.
All of our ordinance, all of our code committees that are in the McMinnville Municipal Code have the enabling for a youth liaison position on it.
I was just asking because the DEI committee manager said that they were the only one with a youth member, and then this one says that they also have a youth member, so that's why I was questioning.
I think the differentiation there is that the youth liaison on the DEI is a voting member.
Yeah.
The liaison on this is ex officio.
Right, exactly.
Counselor Payne, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of, I would like more information on how the council can better support committee effectiveness, so kind of flipping that question from staff to the council. One perspective I would ask for has kind of been brought up through the audit committee processes. What's the cost of altering a committee or doing it in a work session versus in a committee? Just having that information available when we're talking, having these discussions.
Counselor Geary.
Yeah, I think noticing the canceled meetings and the general, I guess, harried pace or propping up of committees to do work, we're trying to go through the committees themselves to find more time for them to do work, and maybe it's looking at how we're staffing and how we're scheduling those. We did adjust a few, but maybe it's looking at all of those more about scheduling and staffing. I noticed a lot of those are tied to planning. Is that, is there a way to work through that through other departments or staffing or off-cycle months from those so the same staff member could run both committees on an off-month schedule? Perhaps it's not a, do we need this or not need this committee? It's a, can we, can we schedule this a little smarter?
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, thank you. I'm fairly comfortable with what you brought forward to us today. Honestly, I didn't have a chance to chime in on the DEI committee, and that one I will acquiesce to the recommendation if that's indeed the case, but I didn't quite hear the saying coming from Noel that it should just be brought entirely internally. And I do have some pretty significant concerns when the reasoning behind the creation of the DEI was to bring more accessibility for our community to the city, and by removing it, it is absolutely doing the exact opposite. It is not making us more accessible. It is taking away accessibility. And so if it were a need because of the administration to adjust the verbiage, we cannot eliminate, we can't scrub that from us. So if it needs to be changed to accessibility for all committee, I'm fine with that, too.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, I pretty much said everything I felt about each committee along the way, so I don't have a lot to say other than I want to thank my interim council president for bringing this before us and the work that you laid out to do this. Council president, sorry.
City manager.
City manager, wow. My interim city manager for the work that he did to bring this forth, and each department head that did the work to bring this for us. It was, I know it wasn't light work, and it gave us an opportunity to really go through something we needed to go through, so thank you very much for doing it.
Counselor Peralta.
Yeah, I echo a lot of those comments. Thanks to staff for your work, and I'm ready to move on to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I just have some things I want to get in the notes. Packets, I want to make sure they're standards, that the packets are available to our committee members within a reasonable time. The one we can advance that Heather said is great. If the email involves plans, make sure those plans are at the resolution that are going to be readable to the committee member. Cancellation, I want to make sure we have a standard for cancellation. We talked about seven days. Onboarding, that we have an onboarding process for all of our committee members so that they know their role on the committee, the expectations, the rules in regards to conflicts, public meeting laws, history of what has been happening on the committee. Committee chairs are trained in Robert rules here and moving forward. Accountability, so I want, we need to look at terms, which we did already today. And notification, I want to make sure that we have a policy or a plan that anybody that's expiring off a committee is notified at least a month in advance so that they know whether they want to reapply. And I think we need to review interview questions. I sit on a lot of interviews, and the questions are redundant a lot of times, or there is five questions in one. So I think we need to look at the questions that we're asking our committee interviewees when we interview. Okay, I will now close. Do you have something else to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys all for having the discussion and leaning into that tonight. I'll bring some things back to you as discussed this evening. Thank ET for filling out all the information, and especially Director Hedges for her help on my first slide deck presentation.
Perfect. It is 7:07. I'm going to close the special called City Council work session. Yep, two minutes, get something to drink, come on back. Okay, councilors, can I have you back to the dais?
No.
Thank you for being patient with us. I just wanted to make sure and get all we needed to into our previous work session.
Thanks, Dan.
So it is 7:12, and I would like to now call the City Council meeting together, to, excuse me, I need to call it a special call, City Council meeting to order, and request Scott to do the roll call.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Tokowski.
Here. Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
I am here.
Counselor Payne.
Present.
Council President Peralta.
Present.
I'm here, too. And before we move forward, I need to let everybody know that there was an executive session that was planned for after this council meeting, and that is not going to happen, so you can take that off your agenda. Okay, now, if you're able to stand, I'd like you to stand. If not, please just, everybody join me in the pledge. Any interested audience member are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the City Council, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some time in the future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record, and we will start with those who have pre-registered. Scott, do we have anybody signed up for public?
First up, we have Stedony Winfield.
Good evening.
Thank you all so much for all that you do and for taking the time. Just a couple of questions, or just a couple of thoughts. As a, as somebody who's been involved with the, with the city for probably longer than most of you, I appreciate the fact that we now have committees. I do not have to have a planning commission meeting like I had back in the 2000s where we went to 1:30 in the morning. Those committees distill information so that, and filter it so that we actually get the essence of what is important to go forward. So the, you know, the historic, the Downtown Historic Association truly helped during the apartment or the hotel, the Gwendolyn Hotel, couldn't bring it up. And the Landscape Review Committee has helped along with the Airport Committee and the Housing Committee for the airport area. All of those really, really do bring and save time for those of us on the planning commission. I'm kind of muddled tonight because I have two hats. I have my chair hat, and then I also have my citizen hat. So I would encourage you to at least keep these committees going even if they only meet quarterly because they do provide help to us when we have, when we do have to see them. Secondly, I agree with the mayor, the interviews and the, I would agree that we need to have notice to the people who are rotating off of committees, and I agree we need to change those interview questions. My only other comment is if we do have any citizens who are coming forward to be interviewed who do not meet the criteria, it is okay not to bring that person onto that committee or anybody onto the committee. Reopen it and try to find somebody that's more eligible for what we need. In the past, we have had people that really needed a lot of time to bring up to speed, and that's great because I want to have people to have knowledge, but at the same time, if we waited, we may have gotten somebody that would have been more acceptable. And then lastly, regarding the DEI, I actually agree with Counselor Chenoweth. We do agree on some things, but the reason I agree with him is not for the same reason he agrees with, what he is concerned about. We have to have DEI according to the state of Oregon, not just the federal laws, so we do have to stay in compliance with that. It has more to have to do with employment laws. But at the same time, the DEI committee provides a window into our community, and by taking it away and not providing an opportunity for citizens to participate, you are limiting what our committee can be or what our city can be. As Counselor Peralta stated, we have, we are now over 20% Hispanic in our community, and we need to have a lens for our entire citizens. As somebody also on the Planning Commission, back in the 2000s, I was the one that brought up ramp sidewalks. The case law hadn't come down yet to the Planning Department for them to recommend that. So having a variety of opinions via committee would have precluded me from having to say something. It would have already been there. Somebody with our disabilities with the MVP or somebody would have brought that forward. I shouldn't, as a planning member, had have said that. I also don't think that an internal person can provide the community of what we've been having and enjoying for the last couple of years since we've had this committee. I really have, I've enjoyed the, all the different opportunities that, the events that they have provided, and I'm not sure a single person within the department can do that. My suggestion to you all is maybe think of bringing a lot of stuff internally, but also keep a committee that can work with that internal person so that, oh.
Thank you, though. You can certainly email us if you have other things that you didn't get in. We would love to hear.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Scott, do we have anyone else?
Next, we have Michael Burr.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Mike Burr. I'm a retired minister representing the social justice team at McMinnville First Baptist Church. As a minister, I have to say that I've been an advocate for diversity, equity, and inclusion all of my life. The church teaches that in God there are no differences among us, that all are equal in the sight of God. of God. It says, neither Jew nor Greek, male nor female, slave or free. I know this isn't a religious issue, but the principles are really the, the same. Because diversity, equity, and inclusion are core principles of our country. It's, they're core principles to democracy. If you take a coin out of your pocket, you see on that coin the phrase, "E Pluribus Unum," "One Out of Many." That has been a guiding motto of our country for 250 years. Originally, it spoke of 13 diverse colonies being formed into one union. But since that, that time or history, it's been a guiding light of our democracy, as we sought to live into that founding principle that all people are created equal. Given the core importance of these principles, I think it's important that our community not step back from holding them up for all of the residents and members of the community. Diversity, equity, inclusion have to be understood as core foundational principles. The importance of DEI can be seen in reports from not just liberals but conservatives. They're, they're principles that are appreciated by, by everyone. Forbes, which is not exactly a hotbed of liberalism, in numerous articles over the last several years, has noted that 87% of businesses are maintaining or expanding their DEI budgets, and this is for, for good reason. Pushing for equity, justice, inclusion makes good business sense because it makes good public policy sense. It makes good sense because it is the right thing to do. There are all kinds of reasons to keep the DEI committee. Maybe change the name if you want to, but having it as a public effort and a public emphasis of the community is truly important. Moving it internally doesn't work. We all know that if someone isn't in charge of an initiative, that no one is in charge. Our society is a work in, in progress, and we need to keep that work going.
Thank you. So you have additional, you're happy, welcome to an email to us with the rest that you have written there?
I'll, I'll.
And submit it to us.
I'll give them to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up?
Anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to reports from councilors on committees and board assignments, and I, Scott, do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm easy because none of my committees met, so, but I did enjoy a beautiful Veterans' Day, and that was excellent, and I want to thank everyone for showing up. It was really, it was pretty cool. It was fast, though. You had to walk fast.
Yeah. It was good. Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, I'll second the comments on the parade. I had a great time, great speeches afterwards. Got left in the dust by the ambulances, but other than that, it was a blast. Today, EVLC met. Predominantly, we discussed a upcoming, hopeful upcoming, upcoming work government forum. I'll be talking to each one of you councilors to get some indication on times that would work for this, for this to happen. The hope is to see it done in January or February of next year, and it's going to be put on by our partners, formerly known as the Stable Table. And I think that's the only committee that's met, so I think that's where I end.
What did they change their name to? Or is there, oh.
I don't think they want to be known as a.
We'll talk to, they're just.
As a coordinated group. I think they want to be known as the McMinnville Chamber of Commerce, the McMinnville Downtown Association. Visit McMinnville and MEDP.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Council of Governments does not meet until the 26th, and Planning Commission did not meet.
Okay, so my mayor's report, so here are the few things that I've done in the last, since the last council meeting. As mayor, I'm also the lead in the McThimble Water and Light Commission, and Commissioner Takersley will be retiring at the end of this year. Commissioner Takersley, General Manager John Dietz, and I interviewed multiple applicants on October 29th, and we will have a new commissioner that we will announce on December 9th here, and it will come before the council for a vote. I had my quarterly meeting with interim superintendent Courtney Ferrera. We were able to discuss programs the school is offering, ways to support our youth as a school, as a city, and as a community, safe spaces and places that the kids can go that are facing tragedies, diversity, you know, tragedy, crisis, where can they go when school's in session or out of session. In October, the school board also appointed a new board member, Jasmine Horas. And I met with Vice President Joseph Hunter and CFO Mike Wentz from Linfield. They wanted to discuss their current thoughts on the real estate project. They did mention some possibilities of senior living, housing for Linfield's staff, possibly a hotel. So they're in the process, and that will be coming. They have hired people to help them with that. Then, let's see, I attended the November 5th Landscape Review Committee meeting, and thank you for letting me join that. November 5th was the city-county dinner hosted by Newburgh. These are times that all the cities and county, and county commissioners, Business Oregon, the tribe come together to mingle, to hear updates from each other, and it was hosted by Newburgh as a very casual event this year, and it was great. I think we'll hear more from Counselor Tokowski. And last Saturday was a veterans' parade. As mentioned already, it was a great event, and I appreciate the majority of the council joining in on that, and I was honored to be able to speak afterwards alongside Representative Elmer and General Stephen Beach. And I had my monthly meeting with Yamhill County Commissioner Liaison Kit Johnston, and we talked about the current issues in front of the city and in front of the county. Today, I also met with a citizen in regards to looking at resource centers for the homeless community and people in need and trying to figure out ways to bring resources together under one roof or at least in an easier way to be able to help. And today, I was also honored to be able to join the McMinnville Chamber of Commerce Leadership MAC class and talk to them about the city's government, the structure, and answer some questions that they have. So that was what I've done. Counselor Gary?
Thank you. Haven't met with this in McMinnville, Third Street Improvement, or the wastewater pack, but MIRAC met. I wasn't able to attend, but I watched the video and can report that new committee member Kevin Davey was sworn in. I got an update to which we know on the ultimate RB, rubber process. Also got updates on the Third Street Improvement Plan and the funding therein and the downtown master plan. Those projects are delayed for various different reasons and timelines. Additionally, I was also able to walk in the Veterans' Day Parade, and my dad, Mike, who generally doesn't publicly display his veteran-ness, is a United States Marine Corps veteran, and he got out and watched the parade, and he enjoyed it. And Hiram had a good time walking in the parade, too. So thanks for the opportunity.
Counselor Payne?
As you mentioned, and was previously mentioned in the work session, the landscape review committee did meet on the 5th and went through the code amendment, the proposed code amendments and just code, code review, which offered some clarity for that group. Lipstick does not meet again until January, and Audit Committee will be meeting soon.
Counselor Tokowski?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I also attended the city-county dinner, where I actually took second place in the trivia contest about Yamhill County, beating City Manager Garvin by two spaces. Also, second place is the first loser, but yeah. I also attended the Veterans' Day Parade, which was pretty nice. I did enjoy that. The McMinnville Downtown Association, I do want to say now is the volunteer sign-up for the Santa Parade, live and online now, so I'd encourage everybody to go sign up for that. My YCOM committee did not meet, but the airport committee did meet, and Airport Manager Pascal is making a lot of things happen, so I got a bit of an update here. The application for the, it's the Oregon Airport Relief Grant. The $57,000 grant is in progress to match the FAA construction grant for a total project cost of approximately 1.5 million. Of that, 95% is being funded by the FAA, and this includes fencing and a new wind cone for the entire airport, which only required $19,000 of airport funds, so that was good. The taxiway Alpha lighting project was disallowed by the FAA until 2031 due to eligibility issues with the associated runway 1735, and there's a new capital improvement plan, which has been submitted to the FAA to bring the runways back into a better condition, so runway rehab in 2028. There's also a request for proposal for fixed base operator services being drafted. It's expected to be released in early December. The current fixed base operator contract, Pot Cake, is actually expiring, Pot Cake is expiring in June of 2026. The lighting system is broken at the airport, and so the pilot control lighting system is out of service due to an electrical issue. There's a new radio that's expected to be installed in the coming weeks. In the interim, you will notice as you drive by the airport at all times of the night, the lights are completely illuminated, and it's kind of pretty, but it still needs fixed. There's a taxiway and runway striping plan that's taking place, so that there's improved striping. Airport lease policy revision is the big part that we went through. It's in the final stages of approval, with discussions focusing on reversion policies and improved land rates. Significant progress has been made about the lease agreements with future tenants, particularly regarding their reversion process as well. The next steps, it will be finalized, the draft will be finalized, and it's going to be presented to the city council for approval, and we'll continue where there might be some other discussions necessary. That's probably all you care about. That's quite a bit, so, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate the report. I'm going to go to HR Director Vicki Hedges.
I don't have anything incredibly exciting to report. We did wrap up open enrollment, and this will be the first year that HR has taken on that work from finance, so hopefully continuing to eliminate some of the workload on finance as we bring things into HR. So this will be the first year that open enrollment data gets processed through this department instead of through finance.
Thank you. Like Works Directors, Jeff Hansiger?
Yeah, don't have a lot tonight because I'm still catching back.
Welcome home.
They're being gone for a couple of weeks. Counselor Tokowski covered everything I need to cover for airport. For operations, it's leaves, leaves, leaves. There's leaves in the parks, there's leaves on the street, they seem to be everywhere. For wastewater, we're currently working on a big push to finalize the wastewater master plan, but it's not done, so what was originally scheduled to be a work session on the master plan next week is now a mass, a work session on the proposed CIP prioritization process that staff is looking to install here at the city. So we'll be talking with you all about that next week.
Okay. And Scott filling in for Claudia Cisneros, and also your IT.
All right, so I hope Claudia's not watching us this time, so just in case.
She said she wasn't going to.
I've been working with our partners over there that we're going to hear more from tonight on the municipal court software upgrade project. We completed another training and integration week in our RMS police records software project. Still keeping that one on track as well. Had a few public records requests coming our way in the last couple of weeks, and we've kind of started some project discussions for the technology upgrades for this room, so hoping to be moving that one forward in the next few months, so.
Thank you. Finance Director Katie Henry?
Thank you, Mayor. So in finance, we have been closing out the first quarter. So, and you have in your packet, I believe, the, the financial report for the first quarter. And then we are focused both on audit and budget. This is the one time of year where we have both open at the same time. So we are launching the budget, working on the calendar and the software, and we're also working with the auditors on closing out the audit. They are close to having the draft statements to us, so that means that we're in the home stretch. This is very good. We've got a couple more weeks, and then we'll be just tying things down. We do have an RFP open for the new auditors. The responses are due back by December 16th, and then from there, we'll go to the scoring and selecting an auditor. From, so my, my question or what we will need to clarify is, are we keeping with the audit committee for the scoring that we have with just the, the three individuals, or are we expanding the scoring group to be everyone? So I'll leave you to discuss that with City Manager and to give me more guidance on that in the future. And since I have Jason here, do you want to update on Court right now?
Thank you. Court, I didn't know, I didn't prepare anything. I didn't know I was giving a report, but I'll tell you this. Court is really focused on Court Software Upgrade Program, project that we're going to speak about tonight. The Court is in a good spot with a new hire starting on November 17th, so we're excited to bring on another staff member to get to our full capacity. That'll take some stress off of some of the senior clerk and my duties that will be able to give us some time to work on some other things that we need to get caught up on. Other than that, right now, we are in a rash of dog cases. I know that it's a very public thing with some of these cases. We had a lot of that going on in the last few weeks. We've been kind of dealing with this since March, and so that is really the focus right now, and we just have an uptick in jail lodgings, it seems, so we're at the jail lot. But yeah, things are going smoothly, but we are really hitting it hard lately. There's a lot going on in the court.
Thank you. And Heather Richards?
Sorry, that squeaks every time. Yeah, so I wanted to update you on the Southwest Area Plan. It's one of your council goals for this year. We have a joint work session planned for you and the Planning Commission on December 17th, and then we are also preparing for a community design workshop on January 24th. That workshop will be noticed by mail to every mailing address in the city of McMinnville to invite people to come in and participate in it, so that, we expect that to be our largest public event for this planning process, and we're looking forward to that. We are also, December 18th, talking about committees. For December 18th, for the Planning Commission, unfortunately, because of the way deadlines fall out, they're actually going to have five public hearings that night. Hopefully, we'll be able to put some of them together so we can manage the time, but this is all to meet that March 1st, 2026 deadline we have from the state for land use efficiency. So we'll be starting the airport master plan update, adoption, we'll be starting the McMinnville landing overlay. We will look at land use efficiency measures for employment land and for residential lands. That means we have to update those two needs analysis documents, and then we'll be updating the framework plan as well. That all got noticed into DLCD today for that December 18th public hearing, and we'll be noticing that in the newspaper here soon as well. And then I also wanted to echo what Counselor Chachowski said. I serve on the MDA Board representing the city. We are looking for volunteers to help out the night of the Santa Parade and the tree lighting. It's a great event. It's a lot of fun to get involved in, but it does take a lot of hands to make sure that people are safe and we can manage the event appropriately. So I encourage people, if you're interested in doing so, please volunteer to help with that event that night. It is on Friday, November 28th. And then I also encourage people to go online to the Mary McMinnville website. There you can see all the different activities that will be taking place here very shortly downtown and throughout our community for our Mary McMinnville events for the holidays.
Thank you, Heather. Any reports? David Leitberg, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this being my first public meeting back, I wanted to say in public, a special thank you to everybody who covered things during my absence. Um, as I have been coming up to speed on quite a few things, it's been very clear that, for the most part, things went really smoothly in the legal department, and I have a lot of gratitude for the people who kept that going. Um, as far as reports out of the department, um, I am coming up to speed, and there aren't a lot of particular reports, but I did want to update you on one particular dog case as Jason started. Um, the, the case that started it all, uh, involved four wolf dogs, uh, back at the beginning of the year. Um, early on in that process, two of those dogs were turned over to a sanctuary by, um, by, uh, plea agreement. And in the meantime, the two other dogs that couldn't demonstrably be linked to the damage of pets in the community, they have been remaining in a kennel, uh, paid for by the police department as we sorted out, uh, legal proceedings and challenges in the meantime. Um, as you know, just before I left, that ended the, the appeal of the original municipal court order was determined and sent back down. The municipal order was withheld, and the order at that time was that those dogs could be redeemed upon, um, payment, vaccination, um, microchipping. And in the meantime, in the six weeks that I was gone and any time before since, they have not been redeemed. So my office, uh, petitioned the court to humanely euthanize the dogs as having been abandoned under Oregon code. Um, a week ago, that was granted, and once that is granted, according to that same code, uh, the, the governing body is also able to, um, release to a responsible party. A responsible party came forward, being Susan Faulkner of Cooper's Kennel, who they have been housed with. Um, and upon full repayment of kenneling fees plus a number of those same criteria that we had been waiting for, the dogs will be rehomed there.
Thank you for the update. Uh, city man, interim city manager, Adam Garvin?
Mayor, before I get to my update, I would like to draw your attention to, uh, the library. Courtney's here to give a presentation, as well as Josh is here from Park and Rec.
Oh, thank you.
On, uh, Jenny's behalf.
Oh, thank you for letting me know. Courtney?
Thanks. I think we are both afraid to sit in Jenny's chair. Oh. I am Courtney Terry. I'm the Adult Services Manager at the Public Library. Um, and I just wanted to share with you, uh, some of the programming that we've been having at the li, uh, the library lately. Um, the past school year, we worked a lot with the McMinnville School District and their Raising Resilience MAC program, um, which, uh, the library wants to be part of as providing a community space where the teens can come, they can interact. Um, and that's been happening, and it's been really exciting. Uh, our staff was at Grizz Fest last month in October. Um, the word on the street was the library booth was bougie, which I thought was a bad thing, but I guess is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
I learned something. Um, and since that, we've just seen, uh, uptick in the amount of views that are coming to the library. Um, and then we were invited tomorrow, two of my staff are going to the high school for a kind of career event, and I was like, well, did they want to know like what the li, like what resources the library has for job seekers? Or do they want to like learn about being a librarian? And my staff was like, both? But it was, I'm excited. Anytime we can, uh, go and spread the good word of how to be a librarian, we'll, we'll take it. Um, and then I personally was, uh, covering this previous Friday night, we had our monthly teen game night. There were 45 middle and high school students, um, that came, and, uh, it, like, I thought the library was wild between like the two story times on Wednesday, but the game night, it, the energy and the enthusiasm, I was stuck downstairs. Uh, there were so many teens that we had to turn on the computers in the children's room, and so I was down there kind of supervising the gaming. But I could just hear at the top of the stairs, um, I think the kids were playing Smash Brothers on the library suite, and like the cheering that was happening, and, um, it, it was really wonderful. And so, um, it, I'm very pleased, um, just with my staff and the work that we've been doing, um, to welcome teens into the library and also, um, those opportunities. I will also say, uh, our craft fair is happening Saturday, December 6th. It's gotten so big, we had to do two sessions, AM and PM, and it's on a Saturday, so we, uh, reworked that. And that's also a really fun opportunity. Um, we've really stepped up our, uh, kind of registration tasks, and, um, the kids have to show up in person with a finished sample project, which we display at the library until the craft fair. Um, and then finally, as kind of another part of we providing the space, but also providing that support, uh, Kelsey Murray from Yamhill County came, and most of the library frontline staff, as well as some folks from the Aquatic Center and Parks and Rec, completed the QPR Suicide Prevention Training. And, uh, we're working with the county mental health, um, just to make sure that all of our frontline staff are trained in, um, kind of mental health response. Right. It's, uh, the library's mental health response has thankfully changed a lot in the past year. Part of that is because of the surgery. And so, um, yeah, I'm excited about the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Courtney. Josh?
That enthusiasm. I recently have hit my six-month probation, and much like the Little Mermaid who got her voice after three days, I'm, I feel like I've made it. I'm here at the, the dais to present to you, and I've got my voice. Um, but I still have a little bit of sea legs. Um, we are at the Aquatic Center in the middle, are about to start swim season for the high school, so it's going to get really busy out there. We're also very busy with teens. Our teen nights are so popular, we had to have a discussion today about how we can get kids through the door faster so that they can enjoy that hour of time. Um, and finally, for the Aquatic Center, it is still a good time, and it is always a good time to take swimming lessons because swimming is an important life skill. Um, it's one of the leading causes of death worldwide, accidental death and injury. Um, so get your swim lessons, and we are revamping our program. We're looking at how we can get more people through the door. Um, we're even doing some learn at your own speed kind of times, recalling the family lesson independent practice. The Community Center has, uh, no school basketball days that are also very popular, and their Maker Space has been very popular as well. That's something they're excited about. As a reminder, there's not going to be a mailed out winter guide, um, but we will have copies available at the centers, the, uh, Community Center, uh, Senior Center and Aquatic Center, um, and throughout the city in various places. Winter Fun is coming up, the, uh, that will be December 15th to January 3rd. There's going to be Showings of the Grinch, an Elf Factory, and Noon Years Eve, for those of us who like to go to bed before midnight. Um, and the Senior Center is continuing all of their programmings. Uh, they wanted to highlight some of the free programs that they have going on right now, including partnering with YCAP for Harvest to Home for Older Adults. It's free produce on Tuesdays from 9:45 to, 8:45 to 9:45 AM through mid-December. There's also a pasta feed on November 18th next week from 12 to 1 that's sponsored by the Fur Cross Senior Living. And they have a Little Big Band Concert on Saturday, December 6th from 1 to 2:30 that is open to everyone, not just seniors.
Thank you. I just want to say, I also met with Savannah from the Aquatic Center today, and I didn't mention that, so I appreciate that. And I, a special personal thank you for all of you taking the QPR training and helping and welcoming the youth. Adam, do you have something to report now? Can you beat that?
Um, first up, I have a communications update from our communications manager, Noel. Uh, our main city Facebook page is up 41 followers in the last 30 days. The top performing post, uh, for likes was actually yesterday's Veterans Day post highlighting all the city veteran employees that responded to her request, um, that she had sent out a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the top post by views was the McMinnville Day of Service at a little over 10,000, and, uh, mostly due to our, our paid ads campaign around the CPR bond. Uh, we had about 165,000 views in the last 30 days. 90% of those were non-followers, uh, via the paid media, but still good to get them some exposure, uh, to our city social media campaigns. The Southwest Area Plan, last meeting, I had mentioned that, that was going to close on iHeartMAC on the 31st. Uh, senior planner, Tom Shower, had some additional information to get out via iHeartMAC, and so that survey is still open and will be until November 21st. So if you haven't participated in that, uh, definitely do so. Um, and then, as we've spoke about, the, the city committees for boards and commissions are open until November 21st. Uh, we've had some, some of those ran in the paper, uh, as well. So, uh, there's also digital versions of applications that can be found on the city's boards and commissions page. Uh, so please share those out with anybody that you know is interested and try and increase that applicant pool. Um, as far as from the city manager's office, we addressed goal number three tonight from your August, uh, work session and goal setting. That was kind of the first phase of that. Obviously, there's a lot still to unpack on that, but I wanted to get that in front of you. Um, goal number one, the top goal from your, um, goal setting session is, uh, capacity around long, long-range planning and looking at that, that'll be before you in the December 9th work session. I've been working with Director Richards and, uh, Director Hansiker on, uh, bringing you something forward that lets you guys go through that plan, as well as understand the cost of each of those items, uh, in addition to the FTE requirements of each of those items, so you can have a holistic view, uh, an informed decision-making process as you're prioritizing that long-range plan. Um, and we'll continue to bring forward your goals and get those, uh, not just checked off, but make sure that they're looked at holistically as we move forward with them. Um, outside of that, I've had a few one-on-ones. I had a, uh, a two-on-one with Linfield today with, uh, President Mark and Joseph. Uh, that's a bi-monthly collaboration meeting that we have and looking at ways that the city and Linfield can strengthen that partnership and, uh, really lean into the capabilities of that. Uh, they're looking at potentially launching a, an engineering program. Right now, they have an engineering minor, and so there might be some opportunity there for an intern, um, as well as they have some other ideas around signage and exposure and collaboration with the city on that, um, so we can update some of our messaging around town. And then I had a monthly one-on-one with the fire chief at McMinnville Fire District and talked about some collaboration there as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. All right. Now, we, we have our September 2025 cash and investment report is in the packet, as well as our 2025-26 first quarter finance report is in the packet. Did anybody have any questions? Uh, Finance Director Katie Henry? Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Sorry. Uh, thank you very much for the report. Um, the, the question I had, um, obviously, uh, comparing to the year before, um, is there specific, you, you do a good job of putting the notes in there to call attention to a few things. Is there specific things that we should look for, um, that will inform us specific, uh, of how we're doing? The one thing like I look at specifically is the building having the licenses and permits revenue being down 44%. So that's kind of a flashing light to me. Um, so it is, are there recommendations that you have that we should look at, or will you put in, um, into the notes when there is something to be called out that, that we should bring our attention to?
So I, I will typically put in the notes, but I would love feedback from you as to what you want to have. I'm, I'm much more used to bringing more information than I've seen so far here since I've been in McMinnville. So I tend to give more. So on here, for example, I put less notes than I often would, um, because I go deep into the numbers and evaluate each one that looks a little off. So if you would like me to put notes on all of them that I investigate to kind of give you an idea of what I found when I looked into where things are, I can put more notes if you're interested in, in seeing all of them.
I, I-
As long as it doesn't take like hours.
I have to look at them anyway. I mean, I, I have to do the work.
Okay.
So it's more a matter of, you know, bringing it-
Just writing it down.
I, I enjoy notes a lot. Yeah. Please.
As far as that specific one, and I don't remember if I put the note on there or not, but the, the permitting, um, I, I believe Heather sent something out a little earlier in the year. I don't remember if it went to council or not, but how permitting was down in the county. So they've confirmed that permitting really is down. Um, and so that, just as a reminder, since you're looking at this, that kind of goes along with the projections we had made during budget about property taxes not increasing that extra above the 3%. We'd had that discussion some, um, and so that's, the projection that that would happen is why we kept that conservative on the budgetary revenues. And so I think we're, we are, this is showing that we're coming in line kind of with what those projections were as far as what's happening in the community.
Counselor Cunningham, did you have more questions?
Yeah. Um, I guess for me, the, I really do appreciate the notes, but there's certain things where it, it, even though the percentage rate may look big, it's actually a very nominal amount of dollars, um, because I'm always, I always look at the percentages as kind of my trigger first. Um, so anything that I would say, even though it's, uh, might be a 68%, but is only a few hundred dollars, like that's not something that I'm all that interested in notes. But thank you very much.
I agree. Any other questions for Finance Director? Okay. Thank you. So now we're going to go to the consent agenda. Does any counselor want to request to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Just one item. Okay. So we'd like to consider resolution number 2025-62 of resolution appointing a volunteer to the Planning Commission. Um, consider the request for El Torito Supermarket LLC for off-premises sales, OLCC liquor license located at 1621 Northeast Baker Street. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Gary. Any additional questions, comments? Scott, can you take a poll?
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor President Paltar?
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed unanimously by six in favor and zero opposed.
Great. And I just want to mention that the volunteer to the Planning Commission is Abigail Neeland. Okay. So now, um, we are going to consider resolution number 2025-63, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for municipal court software with Tyler Technologies, Inc. I'd like to call on Jason Carbajal, Court Supervisor, to present.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak with you.
Jason, I'm just going to have you pull your microphone a little closer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Our municipal court is, uh, very excited to be here in front of you tonight. Uh, we are also very excited at the prospect of a court software-
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you.
Jason, I'm just going to have you pull your microphone a little closer. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Our municipal court is very excited to be here in front of you tonight. We are also very excited at the prospect of a court software upgrade. I want to give you just a brief narrative of our work on this project so far. A software upgrade has been on the court's wish list for several budget cycles. The funding for this software implementation is included in the adopted fiscal year 25-26 budget. During the procurement phase of this project, it was identified that Tyler Technologies has a current contract with Sourcewell that is available for us to use. This agreement will provide us with a 10% discount from the listing price by going through that. The highlights of this software will provide changes and improvements to our existing financial collection efforts. Case management functionality, case resolution tools, and automated process will make instant impacts on our day-to-day process in the court. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Finance Director Henry and Supervisor of the Municipal Court, do you have anything?
I just wanted to let you know that for procurement, I know that we've had questions in the past about, did we get a lot of several bids? How did we go through that? So I wanted you to know that we used the cooperative purchasing following ORS 190, which is what allows us to use intrastate purchasing agreements. Sourcewell is a department of another state, but they offer purchasing agreements for these large companies that go across the United States. So we looked at their contracts that they had. I reviewed the RFP. I reviewed the bid documents, made sure that everything conformed to what we had. Tyler was the winning bidder for that. There were a lot of bids. I want to say there were at least 15 different bidders on it. And we also received a quote previously from Tyler when we were just looking at different places. And through the contract, we did verify that we received the 10% off of that earlier quote once we went through this contract with using Sourcewell and the cooperative purchasing agreement. So I felt comfortable that we were in accordance with the state's purchasing and with the, what we will be bringing to you as the new procurement manual that is currently in draft form, that will be going to the executive team next week. So we are moving forward at a quick pace. We've been meeting weekly and currently are documenting all of the processes so that we can hit the ground running as soon as we get the go-ahead from the dais to move forward on this.
Great. I just have a question. So we have, number one, I'm super excited that this is going forward. So we had $151,000 in the initial one-time implemation, and then the annual fee fits within that $151. There's money left over. Is the money left over going to go towards the next year? Because we have to pay an annual fee? Or is that staying in the ARPA funds? Interim City Manager Adam Garvin? Or is that something to discuss later?
I think that would be discussed in your budget process.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution Number 2025-63?
So moved.
Resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract for municipal court software with Tyler Technologies. I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth?
Second.
Second from Counselor Payne. Do I have any additional questions? Scott?
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
The resolution passes unanimously, unanimously, and by six in favor and zero opposed.
Yay. Okay. So now, because I already announced that we don't have an executive session, I will now adjourn the special called city council meeting at 8:05 PM. Thank you.